Excellent. All right. Well, then let me hand over to you, Kim Rubenstein.
Thank you so much, Claire. And so lovely to see so many faces this evening in the Zoom. It's still with daylight saving light outside and I do too like to begin by looking outside and grounding myself in country. I think it's a really important human step to connect ourselves to our environment, even more so when we know how precious and precarious it is. But also as a statement of reconciliation, to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land on which we meet and pay my respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. I'm really delighted and I've been looking forward to meeting with all of you for a long time now in terms of the wonderful groups of people who are engaged and wanting to engage with our political system in a meaningful way. And I'm just going to spend a couple of minutes sharing with you why I'm here now, sitting with you as a political candidate. Many of you I've met in other contexts in terms of my professional life. But it really is the journey of my professional life that has made me come to this point of putting myself up as an independent candidate to represent the ACT. A lot of what attracted me to academia and to thinking about a professional life in both ideas and action has been about sort of drawing upon my skill set, the things that I've been blessed with, that I had the privilege of an education to be able to benefit from, to engage with ideas and to pass on those ideas. So as an academic and working in the university sector, after I might say a couple of years as a practitioner, and I'll come back to that very shortly, was about the idea of being able to enthuse students into the things that I see as really important for us as a society through law. And in addition to enthusing students and passing on my ideas to those students and including students who don't turn off their mute button or don't turn on their mute button, for those who still haven't put on the mute button yet, to be able to also develop ideas in written ways as an academic to share ideas to improve thinking about, in my case, legal ideas. But ultimately, I think what always made me feel excited and I'm still feel very fortunate to be working as an academic has been about transmitting those ideas and putting those ideas into action in terms of public policy. So throughout my academic life, I have been keen to share those ideas in the public space, whether it be through opinion pieces or on the radio or more recently over the last few years on television a little bit more. And I've always felt that that was so important as an academic to be independent, to be standing and contributing to public discussion from a position of knowledge and the gift, as I said, of expertise and then sharing that in a way that would better public policy. And the other aspect is I've always kept my practising certificate as a lawyer and continued to do pro bono work and integrate that as an academic by involving students in that work so that that was part of the teaching, but also in terms of the actual activation of ideas in the legal space and in what turned out to be the political space as well in terms of some of the consulting work I did on citizenship law and so forth. But just finally, to finish off these first few minutes, what from that experience has led me to be sitting here as a political candidate for you tonight has been the realisation over the last 18 months that no matter how significant those ideas are out in the public discourse and space, if the people in Parliament are not prepared to listen, let alone to assess the value of those ideas for the greater good, those ideas are not going to be activated. And even more so, I think during COVID, the areas that I've been working on over the last 25 years in the questions of citizenship, in the question of balancing rights of the individual versus the community, in climate change action. Each of these areas that are urgent have been amplified during COVID. And I think we have seen that we are at a point where we actually have to act in a way that our political system benefits directly within the system from those independent voices. And I can come back to talk about the inspiration from the Voices movement that has also been part of that inspiration to me to be here tonight. But I don't want to spend too much more on it, just to have started off to give you a sense of my professional journey, being part of the process of me standing here or sitting here on Zoom with you all this evening. All right. I think that's enough to start us off, but I'm really keen to be answering questions and engaging with you and sharing more about what I've been doing so far.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Kim, for that introduction. We might go to questions. I've already had a few come in over emails. So while I give people a moment to work out how to raise that little yellow hand and ask their question, I might just refer to one of those that I've had that came through email. Had a few questions around priorities. And there's one, just to read it out. I've read the information on your website about what Kim for Canberra stands for. There's a lot there. If you're in Parliament, what would be your top priorities within that? What two or three laws are most important to you to introduce or change?
Okay, great. All right. Well, first of all, I think the concept of standing up for Canberra is really key as an independent. Canberra hasn't had an independent senator. We've always had a Labor and Liberal representative. And I think many of us can see that no matter what one's view of those particular political candidates, they are fixed by the frameworks that they're operating in as candidates within parties. So that no matter what it is that Canberraans are advocating to their representatives, our representatives so far have had to convince the parties that that is what the parties are prepared to move forward with. So as an independent, standing up for Canberra for me is about engaging with Canberraans to be able to truly take into Parliament directly the needs of Canberraans. Now, that has a more concrete expression in terms of specific changes. And one of those is the change to the Electoral Act. So many of you will know that we got our Senate representation in 1975 and that representation is for two senators. Now, since 1975, we've doubled in size. In addition, since 1975, each of the different states have actually increased from 10 to 12 senators, but the ACT didn't. I truly think it's time for us to amend the Electoral Act to enable and provide for four senators for the ACT. And I think that that is important for two reasons. One is that it would provide greater voice for Canberraans standing up to the notion of federal power and the federal override, so for territory rights to express the resistance to any attempt by the federal government to override any ACT legislative decisions. And of course, that's been a big campaign recently over territory rights. And some of you may have seen my Professor Kim little video talking about territory rights. But it would also enable for greater representation in the Senate for Canberraans. Because of course, we know that there are a diversity of views and having more senators would lead to more diversity of representation. So that's one aspect in terms of a priority. The other, of course, is in relation to the ways in which we do politics and how that has been such a stumbling block. So climate change, there is just absolutely no question. And we've seen this in our Parliament over the last couple of days. The parties have been the stumbling block to change on climate change and so many areas. Now, if I'm elected as an independent to the Senate, the likelihood and the evidence in terms of the makeup of the Senate as it is now and it being a half Senate election is that I would be on, I would be part of the balance of power in the Senate. It is almost impossible for whoever wins government to have a majority in the upper house. And so I would be a key influence on climate change action. And there's just no question that that is fundamental. And another is of course, women's safety. And I can come back to that more. But women's safety and gender equality is something that of course, I've been working on for many, many years. And the Sex Discrimination Commissioner's report on Parliament as a safe and equal workplace is due out in November. I'm committed to engaging with that as soon as that report comes out and looking at working on the engagement to lead to immediate implementation as opposed to the Respect at Work report that took over 18 months before Parliament even engaged with it. So there are three aspects, I guess, to start with. Standing up for Canberra and being on a crossbench in the Senate to have real influence on climate change and women's safety are the starting points for what I'm really committed and excited to be doing.
Thanks very much, Kim. And I see that that links very nicely into another question that has come through on the chat function. Let me just read it from Jenny Robinson, who's saying, thank you very much for being available today. But also, where do you stand on climate change?
Oh, I mean, I think my answer just said that all back in, I think it was 2010, but I'd have to double check it. I was one of the ambassadors for what was known as the climate change petition, the Monster Climate Change Petition. Many of you may know of the suffragettes in Australia and the Monster Petition for Women's Suffrage in the 1890s in Victoria, where there was such a large petition of signatures in support of women's suffrage in Victoria, that it was bundled up and introduced into the Victorian Parliament. And so the Victorian Women's Trust said that as women, we should be inspired by those suffragettes and promote a Monster Climate Change Petition. And there were 12 of us who were ambassadors for that. And you know, that involved going out into the communities here in Canberra. My kids were at primary school at that stage and getting people to sign, basically going out to the community to sign this Monster Climate Change Petition. So it's something that I've been working on for many, many years. And I'm totally committed to the, and respecting the evidence, the scientific evidence, drawing on that and working with others who want immediate action.
Right. I suspect we might have some more follow on questions around climate change because I know there's been a lot of discussion in many of the sort of active conversations we've been holding. And so I wonder if we maybe, you know, have a few questions around that one area and then maybe move on to another topic. I've got a couple that have been emailed through, but I wanted to check first if anyone in the group wanted to jump in. Let's see, I'll just, is anyone? So we have a question on the chat function. Do feel free also people to put your hands up and ask in person. Always good to hear different voices. Sue Elliott has asked, do you have a view on the practical changes that you would try to affect in relation to climate change?
Look, I mean, there are aspects of the practice of all of us in our day to day lives that certainly we would want to be promoting throughout the entire community. But in terms of political decision making, practical changes, I think that one of the values of independence, and this is something that I think is not only for climate change, Sue, but also for broader issues in terms of the fact that there are many people in each of the parties who are truly committed to progressing on issues like climate change and other, what might be called more political or contentious issues. And having more independents in the Senate, I think, and in the lower house, of course, as we've seen, is not only about being able to bring in those practical changes directly from the engagement with the people in your electorate, but also to give those people in the major parties greater force within their parties to be able to be activating change on issues like climate change. So we know that within each of the parties, there are people who are committed to climate change, but that the party system has caught them into a very partisan view as to how to move forward. I think as an independent, practically, we can break away some of that partisanship and that the independent voices will enable those stronger voices in the party to have more power within the parties to then practically move forward to negotiation and engagement over good policy on these areas.
Thank you. And I can see that Robert's got his hand up. I just want to check Sue, if you had any other follow up?
Yes. Yes, I'm interested in if Sue has particular ideas she's keen her cell phone because that's part of this is engaging and benefiting from all of your positions.
Well, thank you. I hope you can hear me. Yeah. Thanks for that response. I suppose I was thinking about, and I mean, what you outlined there, I think, sounds like a very sensible strategy. But I suppose, living here in Canberra in A N Z, our family's been going through the sorts of things that we could do, for example. And we're in the process of, for example, buying a secondhand electric vehicle from Japan. It's taken with COVID and all the rest of it, it's taken about a year to get here. But we're keen and it's almost upon us. So I suppose it was that, you know, that there hasn't been any government support to create a secondhand EV market, for example. So I suppose it was those sorts of things I was wondering too. If you had a few ideas about how we can kickstart some of the changes we really need to make this decade?
Well, I think that there are lots of ideas out there and I would, you know, really be drawing upon the experts who have got those ideas. But you know, and encouraging, I think that the encouragement to community activation of those ideas. So, you know, in our own, in our own environment, in my own life, in terms of making a choice for the commitment to solar panels and to a hybrid car and to being very conscious of my own carbon imprint. And examples like that are certainly part of the mix. But the key thing is to be able to draw upon the years of research and activation of ways in which we can do things better and moving forward in a positive way with them.
Thanks. I saw that Robert had his hand up and then I think Will had a question next. So I might go first to Robert.
Hi, Kim. Nice to see you again. My question concerns the time pressures and the demands that will obviously be on any independent that gets elected. You know, a party members have the support, which might be a good thing of their party hierarchy and probably research. But as an independent, you wouldn't necessarily have that support. How do you envisage dealing with complex legislation? The time pressures that may come in dealing with that complex legislation as it comes to Parliament? Would you consider that you might work with some of the other independents to perhaps cooperate in that way? And I guess meeting with constituents would be a very demanding thing too. So basically, how would you, as an independent, how are you going to cope without the backup of a party machine?
I think that's a really excellent question, Robert. And I think it's a question that we should all be asking about the expectations of parliamentarians more broadly. And that's a sort of broader issue about how do we get more diversity of people within Parliament? That's something that I've been thinking about and working on myself professionally for many years about how do we get a range of people with different life experiences when the commitments that are required? And just as another intro to me choosing now as a time to put my hand up as opposed to earlier in my life, when I was, you know, right from the beginning in my scholarly work, I was advocating we needed more women in Parliament. But a consciousness when I was raising a family with my husband Gary, that we wanted to be around for our kids. And so academia for me was a great balance in that being able to make those public contributions without sacrificing that my desire to also have a full and meaningful family life. And I'm now at a position where my kids are 20 and 22 and are part of the larger volunteer campaign team at the moment. So for me, in terms of the time commitments that are required, it will be also not diminishing of my family life, although that alters the family life a bit when your kids are actually working with you on a campaign. But I guess that's a way into a sort of broader issue that your question raises before I get on to the specifics of the answer, which is, I think we should all be thinking. And one of the things that I would be thinking about in Parliament is how do we change the structures and frameworks to enable more people with a diversity of backgrounds to actually seriously think of doing this without it being such a major sacrifice in their life? So we can come back to that if people are interested in that. But specifically to your point, I've, in this process of talking right from the start with the people involved with the Voices for Indi campaign, I could see very quickly that the independents who are there have really given a gift to the nation about the way we can do politics differently and that we don't require the machinations of parties to be able to be truly active citizens and be in there in Parliament doing things. So some of the wonderful things that Cathy and Helen have been doing, which is mentoring people, bringing them into Parliament as volunteers for them to see how Parliament and being part of a broader team working with them. And there's just no doubt that there are these networks of association that have already started within the independents, which would be a wonderful framework entering into Parliament to connect with. But the beauty of that is that you're not fixed by those other people's positions. You can engage with in an honest and authentic way with your other independent colleagues without a sense that you have to follow their point of view, but you benefit from one another. And I think that that really is a guide to the parties, as I said earlier, that the independents can actually improve our party system. But from a more practical point of view, I think it would, you know, I have had a bit to do with Parliament before by virtue of making submissions, being someone who's called in to give expert advice on legislation. And I have such a network of myself personally, as well as, I guess, through the worlds in which I've interacted, that I truly believe that on a whole range of different policy areas that I will be able to draw upon the expert richness, as I was saying earlier, in our broader society outside of Parliament and bringing that into the legislative process to enhance and enrich it, not being fixed by what the parties have provided their own representatives, but the breadth of what we have in this country to draw upon, supplemented by what I would say is the energy and enthusiasm of independents to make sure we do these things better.
Thanks. I'm sure there'll be some other sort of questions around sort of independence in Parliament and parliamentary diversity and things, but I might just park those and come back to climate change because I think there was a few other questions on that. Maybe Will next?
Yeah, thanks very much. It's really great to see your interest in climate change and putting it up front, particularly if this one Glasgow, Glasgow is looming just ahead. But if possible, I'd like just a little bit more detail because one of the critical things that the federal parliament's going to have to do.
Yes.
And it's been shirking its responsibility up till now is emission targets, timetables, plans for getting there and so on. So what are your views on what sort of targets we should make in terms of upgrading where we are? The timetables and any ideas you might have on how we might try to achieve those targets?
So Will, I'm really keen to hear from the experts on this and you're obviously one of those. And I've enjoyed meeting and being with you on various panels at ANU many years ago. And I'm really going to be driven and responsive to your advice on these areas. I've got a great campaign volunteer team and we're developing a range of different issues in relation to our policy responses and ideas. But net zero targets are absolutely, you know, within that frame. Looking at the IPCC report and seeing the urgency of it is just unquestionable in terms of being guided by the scientists here as to what we need to do. So, you know, you're the expert, I'm not the expert, but I am clearly, as someone who values expert opinion, going to be guided by it. And I think the other aspect, Will, in terms of showing that sort of commitment is about recognizing that if you become too specific in what you're putting out to the people about what your policies are, it falls into a trap, to an extent. I mean, there are frameworks within which this operates, of that sense that politics is about what you've promised to do rather than actually truly assessing at each point in the process of the development of policy, the broader context and the nuances that need to be taken into account. And I truly believe with climate change and with all of these issues that have become so divisive and partisan, that part of the problem is that our traditional way of doing politics is to say, these are my policies. This is what I'm committed to and feeling fixed to those policies. So I'm not trying to avoid your sort of specifics in the sense that I'm hiding anything in any way at all. I'm just saying that I think that we have to be really careful, particularly as independents say, I'm committed, and I truly am, to true climate change action that is going to ensure that my children and my children's children and all of our futures as a nation are secured. At the same time as saying, but there may not be only one way of doing it, that there may be combinations of ways of doing it. And I'm going to be relying on the evidence from people like you to guide me and to listen to so many people as we know. And as you've heard and as I've been hearing in the almost 20 Zoom meetings I've held since I've announced, how significant climate change is to all of us and that we have to act on them.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Will.
Now, I know in the chat that Anna Greta had a question on around climate change, but I know that there's also some hands up. Can I check with Meg, Tony and Hugh? Were your questions on climate change or on something else? Yes, Meg's is. Okay. Meg, can I go to you next then, please?
Sure. Thanks, Claire. I suppose it's also to do with emission reduction and so on. But the big elephant in the room seems to be around fossil fuels, coal, gas, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
And we know we've got a limited carbon budget.
Yes.
And it seems to be a problem that the Labour Party has just as much as the Coalition. I'm just wondering if you have any ideas about how you might tackle that huge issue? And of course, it's tied up with the big deal and donations and lobbying and all that sort of stuff. Just wondering if you have any thoughts on that?
Look, I think the commitment to renewable energy is just incontrovertible in the sense of that is, has to be the way forward. And so your question is, how do you manage those electorates? Or how should society more broadly manage those areas in which the fossil fuel framework is fundamental to their sense of their economic wellbeing? Am I understanding your question correctly in that sense of how do we move those sectors of society who are committed to fossil fuel?
Sure. And how do you, I know you've said before that there are members of the major parties that are really committed to this.
How do we help them?
How do you help them?
Yes.
And how do we shift the narrative?
Yes. Look, I think it's a really excellent question. And I think it is a mix of things, Meg. I think it's recognizing the vulnerabilities of those communities that feel threatened. I think that, you know, in all of our engagement with things that are more polarized, part of it is changing the discourse to recognize them as human beings who are not others or people that we have to beat or convince, but listening to them, listening to their needs and then thinking through as a community, how we help them deal with those issues. So whether it's a commitment to better education and transitioning them in terms of their work environments, commitments to their children and to the future of their community, of what needs to be done to assist them recognizing the fact that the impact on them having been from that framework needs to be taken into account. And that's not just a matter of, you know, that sort of negotiation of we'll give you this in order to get that. Because that's what I feel is a very crass politics that we've been seeing over the last couple of days. It's actually treating them as fellow Australians who need to be supported in that transition to renewable energies. And if we as a society can think through that with the honesty of their needs at the same time as the whole community's needs of moving forward in terms of the pressures that climate change is presenting to us as a nation, I think it will lead to a more harmonious movement forward in dealing with those issues, not only for climate change, but of course, for all the other issues that are so divisive at the moment. They just don't need to be.
Thank you. I might ask, go to Hugh next, and then we might leave climate change for a bit and move on to another topic. And then if there's still time, we can always come back. So Hugh? I think you might still be on mute.
That's my unique way of starting every Zoom meeting. Congratulations, Kim, on being able to raise your 1,500 members. And congratulations on, you know, putting your hand up. It's terrific. The question I had was to do with the Zali Stegall Climate Action Bill. I'm just wondering how familiar you are with that and how you would see yourself working, given the roadblocks that are presented every day to that?
Right. So I'm not sure if you were there, Hugh, but the day after I announced, I ran a webinar with Zali and with Kim. So Zali set out very clearly, I mean, it was sort of fascinating on many levels in part, in part. So Zali set out very clearly, I mean, it was sort of fascinating on many levels, in part, in part it answers Robert's earlier question about how do you manage in a scenario as an independent? She gave us a great example, as did Karen in relation to the ways in which you bring in experts and, and Helen, of course, with her corruption, anti-corruption, um, bill too. I mean, each of them are showing that there are ways to do this. Look, I would be a great supporter. Um, I, you know, would be sitting down and, and talking with Zali, um, through the specifics, but, um, but in essence, I would see myself as someone really working with Zali on that climate change bill.
Thank you.
Right.
I know that there's some questions in the chat around sort of strategy, accountability, party structure, et cetera. We'll come, just a flag, we'll come to those in a moment, but first can I go to Tony?
Hi there, Kim.
Hi, Tony.
Well done on putting your hand up, but it takes courage.
Thank you.
I guess I wanted to get a sense. I have two sets of questions, one around kind of, um, Australia's long-held Reform Gridlock, Gridlock.
Yes.
And, and what you might propose around that, all women's issues, safety. So I'll just take your sense or temperature on that. What would you prefer to be fielded on?
Well, I think they relate to one another actually because they're part of an overall structure. So do you want me to do that or can I build on a bit more?
Without wanting to pin you down, because yes, you're right to say, don't want to be fixed on anything. It's about process.
Yes, yes.
What though do you have to say on improving representation so that we're genuinely reflecting the Australian community?
Yes.
Do you think that we need electoral laws that mandate gender quotas, not just having the Labour Party, you know, go forward with voluntary quotas, which have certainly made a difference, but something across the Parliament?
Yes.
And moving beyond gender, recognizing sectionality and diversity, diversity quotas is an idea. Because as you well know, this is about culture.
Yes.
And it's the hardest thing of all to change. How important is the idea of diversity quotas?
So, um, let me answer that in a broad sense, which is that commitment like you to, um, changing the structures that enable more diversity. Now, there are a multitude of ways of doing, of doing this. One could be, um, um, a move towards, um, a commitment to equality. I mean, the first piece that I wrote as a, um, constitutional, um, law academic was on improving representation for women and saying that there could be an argument that quotas are necessary to fulfill the system of representative democracy. Um, and I think that there's no question that if you think about the nature of representation and merit, well then in our political structures, part of merit is about properly representing the community. And so um, consistent with that is that you are enhancing the meritorious nature of our Parliament if you ensure that there is a proper representation. But at the same time as seeing the value, Tony, in something like that proactive step. I think the thing that has really impressed upon me in the last 18 months in thinking through the work that I've been doing in a broader sense of gender action and women's safety, which comes back to that specific aspect, is that within our society, there are norms and expectations about gender and about race and about place in society that need to be challenged, but not only challenged, that need to have a commitment to a true engagement with those structures to enable changes that embed as a norm, gender equality in all our structures. So that's coming back into the home. That's recognizing that the shared load, sharing the load in the home and changing the ways in which we expect and, um, um, and see, um, expectations of who's responsible for caring in society, these sort of broader gendered aspects of our lives that need reform work on it. Now, that's not to say it's social engineering, but it is about recognizing that the structures that we have in place at the moment are structures based on norms of certain, of certain people being responsible for caring in society. Um, and that's been largely women, but it's also in terms of expectations of place and entitlement in society, which has come from who's been there first. And that, and that sense that the way things have been done are the right way of doing things without properly engaging with how do those, those processes live with, sit with the lived experiences of everyone in society? So look, we could spend a couple of hours talking about this, Tony, but in essence, what I, what I would say to you is that in light of those 25 years of work, I'm really open to the possibilities of working with others who are truly committed. And I think that there are more of those people in Parliament than we realize, but the party structure has made it very difficult for those ideas to come out and the that having an independent like me in the Senate and me being able to be a spokesperson on some of those issues as an independent and voice some of those things without the fear of retribution from a party might be, um, as, as I said, a trigger to bringing out some of those ideas more strongly from people who already have those ideas within those parties, but have been a bit trapped by the system so far.
Right, right, right. So Claire, do I have permission for a follow-up? I mean, it, it's sort of related and it's sort of about Australia's long, uh, Reform Gridlock, over at least two decades now. So beyond energy policy, we've touched on, there's tax and so on. So what do you think are important institutional changes needed? Non-federal ICAC, which is clearly on the agenda now.
Yep.
Um, to sort of see real culture change.
So I think that there are two aspects which are both institutional, actually, Tony, which um, are linked to the nature of the value of our public service. What we've been seeing over the last, as you said, sort of 10, 20 years is the, um, politicization of, um, our public service and a reduction of the um, capacity for full and frank, um, advice to government. And the reform agenda has really, I don't know if you've seen the Braden Institute report, um, that John Daly put, put out, but it is very clear that as we've seen a demise, um, or a reduction in the, um, the, the capacity of our public service to serve on policy, to be real generators of ideas, um, we've seen that, um, diminution of our, uh, reform, um, agenda. And I, I think that speaks to, um, the need for greater attention to supporting, um, the, the, the real value of the public service as a public service to serve the needs of the community and to be without that political, um, restriction in what they put up to our representatives as possibilities for reform. And then for our representatives, and this again becomes the dynamic of the Parliament at any given time, where independents, I think, have a role to play to better ensure that that advice, um, and that material that comes before parliaments, whether it be in the parliamentary committees in the Senate, are actually taken on board and promoted in a, in an authentic way about what is the best policy for any given scenario. So I think it plays out through the public service. And I think it also plays out in terms of institutional frames that were introduced, actually, interestingly, in the seventies and eighties, things like freedom of information legislation, like an administrative appeals tribunal, the ombudsman, um, the administrative review council. How many people in the room remember a very large and very productive administrative review council? That council was set up under the Administrative Appeals Tribunal Act in the late seventies to be a sort of quasi, um, uh, body to advise government on things like accountability, transparency, all of the issues that are sort of fundamental to a democratic, uh, framework being a daily aspect of our lives, not just at elections when we decide who we're going to, um, to, um, elect, but in between elections, having those frameworks of freedom of information, a tribunal body to actually keep government accountable. We're seeing the diminishing of the, the cutting down of those, uh, institutional frames, the challenges we just saw recently and Rex Patrick came to, to the, uh, to the party, so to speak, um, in relation to challenging the desire to make national cabinet within F O I. Tribunal members who have been appointed, um, political appointments that takes away the independence of the, of the A I T. An ombudsman that's been overwhelmed with more and more jurisdictions without the, um, appropriate funding. And then I mentioned the administrative review council. I think at one point, when I first came back from my graduate work, there was a job advertised there and I remember looking at it. I think there were about 20, at least 20 people working at the administrative review council. There are now one or two people within the Attorney General's Department who are in that role because they just took all the funding away from the minister. So all of those steps over the last, you know, period have diminished the, um, institutional frameworks that were supporting our democracy. And I think that has led to the question you asked about ICAC. We need an ICAC now because we've lost the power of those forces. They should be reinstalled and I would be working to, um, really advocate for the amplification of those structures again. But at the same time, the ICAC would be a very direct way of making sure that those fundamental integrity principles are, um, essential and foundational to all representatives who are there representing all of us.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, Tony, for the questions because actually there was a few that I'd received from email around, over email around, um, diversity and, and gender issues. So, um, can I just double check there's no follow-up on, on those topics before I move on to another aspect? Doesn't seem to be. Okay. So perhaps, um, if I move to, to another area, there was a question from Michael Bones, Michael, around, um, kind of strategy. Michael, did you want to ask that one in person or where are we?
Sure, yeah. Um, I can, thanks for lying and sticking your hand up, um, to being independent. Um, my question was just basically based around sort of the proactive conversation that we had. Um, first with the Pro Act group was sort of a big spray on all the numbers that we needed um, to actually win the seat. And it came to sort of, I think if my memory serves me, one in six for first preference votes.
Yes.
But going through all the distributions, it showed that, um, quite a few needed to come from both the Greens and, uh, traditional Liberal Party voters. So that's a, that's a pretty challenging task.
Yeah.
And the question was really just around, how, how do you plan on walking that line and, um, I guess attracting two strange bedfellows?
Yeah, look, I think it's, um, it's, um, thanks for asking that question because I think that is obviously central to how do we go about um, and how I go about getting those numbers. Look, I think we are at a moment where there are people who have been aligned with a range of parties who are so dissatisfied with our party system broadly. So I think that first of all, across, across the board. Um, and, and include Labour in there too. You just referred to Liberals and Greens, but I think also, um, there are Labour voters out there who are dissatisfied with, um, refugee policy, with tax policy and, um, with the, um, approach on a range of different policy issues. So I think that dissatisfaction is real. But I think for anyone who has been aligned with any of those parties in the past to then go and vote for the other party. So if you were a Labour to vote Liberal or Green or for the Liberals to think of voting Green or, um, Labour, it would just be, uh, too difficult for some people, not necessarily for all, but for some. And to have a real independent, authentic voice um, in advocating for the needs of the community is one of the first things that I think will be attractive to a range of voters. The second thing I think for, um, my thinking about moderate Liberals here in Canberra who haven't been properly represented is that if they've, um, you know, seen, um, the work that I've been doing over the last 18 months around COVID, a true commitment to liberalism and, um, liberal ideas in relation to the balancing of rights. And that's something that I truly am committed to in thinking through the way as a society we manage different needs. And I think COVID highlighted how, um, um, disappointing this government was and, um, how the inability to truly commit to liberal values by a liberal government in relation to balancing the rights of the individuals with the rights of the greater community. And just to give you one example, Michael, and the one that um, I've been thinking about a lot, the closing of borders and the rights of Australian citizens traveling in and out of the country. That's just one example where they took an illiberal approach. Now, I'm not saying that we should have had completely open borders and let COVID run in, but there were clear ways the true Liberals could have moved forward with this. They could have said, we have the quarantine power. We believe in the right of Australian citizens as, um, as, as our fellow individual members to be able to come back into Australia, or even those Australian citizens coming back to the diversity point of Tony's. Forty-nine percent of this country have either a parent or themselves who were born outside of the country, so have family overseas that they have been prevented for the last two years from being able to go and visit. I mean, how heartless has, is that as an experience? We know that some of us internally, but for those of you in the room who have been in the experience, my heart goes out to you in not being able to see your, your family members. A true liberal government would say, we have quarantine powers. We want to inject, um, uh, you know, economic activity. We're going to get the construction industry, um, implementing new quarantine stations around the country to enable those Australian citizens to have their individual rights protected at the same time as properly protecting the community from COVID. So I think that, um, there are aspects of my commitment to, um, liberalism in its truest sense, in a liberal democratic sense, in terms of rule of law notions, in terms of ministerial accountability. I mean, that's the other issue over these last couple of days of, of a liberal government blocking a speaker's recommendation that something about transparency should be and, and, uh, and our parliamentary committee, um, a, a liberal government has just blocked that. I think that there are very many Liberals who would be dissatisfied, who would never think of voting Green or Labour, but who would look at something, someone like me who has um, really committed myself over those 25 years in my professional life to these issues, saying I can trust someone like him to represent me and I will give her my vote in the Senate.
Thanks, Kim. Michael, any follow-up to that?
No, I'll, um, yeah, move on. But thanks, thanks for your response, Kim.
Thanks, Michael.
I might just, because I'd, I'd had, um, by email a couple of questions related to it as well. And I just wanted to kind of probably follow up on someone else's behalf therefore around, um, what's your, um, understanding of what disaffected Liberals care about? So now you've mentioned some of those areas that are important to you. Um, and that that may bring, um, Liberals, uh, across. But have you, what's your analysis of what are the, the, the key issues that that really important group of disaffected Liberals, what are the key things today?
First of all, I, I, I think that's, that's a fair question and I'll definitely answer it, but I do think that we all should be very careful here. A wise senior Liberal person sent to me, um, and I've been speaking to quite a few, um, individuals who I'm obviously not going to name, that, um, we have to be very careful about labeling people. And I think this is something that we should all be very conscious of and as independents, I think even more so. Um, so when we talk about what do Liberals think? Do we really think that there's a monolithic view out there? I think that there's a commitment to liberalism and protection, protecting and enhancing individuals' um, prosperity, economic prosperity, personal prosperity. So I think in that sense, um, that the point that I just made to Michael about liberalism and protection of individuals and and I, um, if you think, you know, you think of, um, the, the Liberals that stand for liberalism being Menzies or someone, how many of you remember Alan Missin and what he did around freedom of information legislation, those, those liberal ideals that many moderate Liberals, um, are committed to. Um, they're aspects that I think I speak to. But in terms of, um, other aspects, I think that there are plenty of, of, of Liberal voters who are very concerned about climate and just haven't had that voice properly expressed. So having someone who's not a Green and not Labour, but who's speaking to those issues, who's more um, consistent with other aspects of their identi, uh, their personal lives, I think that's definitely true. But I think also, if you have a look in Canberra, um, and the, the voting records of, of migrant, um, of, of the migrant community or of people who benefited from John Howard's, um, um, business migration program, for instance, we have many people here in Canberra who benefited from that program, who have really been, um, neglected by this government. And I come back to that point. If you think of the India travel ban, that was a, um, a true reflection to those communities who would probably, um, again, because we have to be careful not to label, but who would probably have benefited greatly from John Howard's commitment to the business migration program and would who would traditionally be, um, Liberal voters. They, I think, would have, would have seen how, um, this government viewed them during that period. And I was extremely vocal at that time about how um, that was not consistent with a liberal democratic framework, not only the question about citizenship rights, but the ways in which the Indian community, um, were particularly targeted um, in a way that was not consistent with those values. And then, um, I think I would also say that in terms of, um, uh, uh, more conservative, um, social, you know, a more conservative social, you know, world that some people, and this is not necessarily Liberal, it's just about the authenticity of a commitment here in Canberra to diversity and that there are many, you know, we know that the numbers are that Canberra was the highest supporting of marriage equality. So there are many Liberals who are not necessarily being properly represented by their current representative on those issues, not to mention issues to do with religious freedom that don't necessarily lead to a discriminatory pathway. So I just think that there are so many issues, Claire, in terms of being, one, careful about labelling the Liberal vote. And then recognizing within that diversity that the issues that are concerning for the what what some call the moderate Liberals are things that I'm speaking directly about. And there'll be a synergy there in terms of their their trust in voting for someone like me.
Thank you. I might just check if there's anything else around sort of strategy before I move on to another area of talking about your party for a minute.
Sure.
Don't think anyone is putting hands up or leaping onto the chat for that. Yes, maybe. Robert, is your question around strategy? I think you're on mute still.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Kim, you've mentioned the strategy of trying to secure more senators for the ACT. And I guess, I'm not sure about the Northern Territory. How would you go about doing that and what conditions might have to be engineered or or negotiated to get that to actually happen? How difficult will it be?
Oh, well, in some ways, it's a very simple step, Robert, because it's not a constitutional change. It's a simple change to the Electoral Act. So in that sense, as an in as a Member of Parliament, I can introduce a bill and then start, you know, negotiating and speaking and getting the support of the the numbers in the Lower House and the Upper House. And that will very much be dependent on the numbers then and how one goes about that sort of discussion. So it's, I mean, I mean, the bottom line is that I can do it because if I'm in Parliament, I can introduce legislation. But there'll be processes, no doubt, in the political climate of the framework of doing that at the time. But I think Claire's question was more about strategy about Kim for Canberra than, but but ultimately that is part of the longer term strategy.
Great. Thank you. I might move on to a couple of questions that have come in on the chat and kind of roll them together because they're both around your party, Kim.
Sure.
And saying, congratulations on getting the numbers. So one of the questions was, when would you hear back from the AEC around the registration? And the second question was to get a sense of what roughly what proportion of those who have registered to our ACT residents?
Sure, great. So I don't have the exact figures here in front of me, but it's a significant proportion, I think over a half of those. But I don't have the actual actual numbers. So I got, I think, when I first announced, I had five hundred members within a week, which was just such a wonderful affirmation, because a lot of people did say to me, it can take a long time for party membership. But I think that response really speaks to the appetite in in our community for 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 someone like me to be doing this. And then the further a thousand came over the next four weeks after that. So again, a real show of the excitement about this step. In terms of the process, so we submitted the application on the first of October. And those of you who have probably looked at the party registration framework will know that they say it takes a minimum of twelve weeks. So that takes me to the twenty fourth of December before I will be registered as a matter of clarity. So of course, if Scott Morrison calls an election for December, then I will not be above the line. But if he calls an election next year, then all being well, that minimum of twelve weeks will pass. And then it will be a question of how soon after the twenty fourth of December, they're back on deck in early January and how long that final step will be. But theoretically, it could be if all goes according to their plan, because the process involves them checking the fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred and fifty members, actually. So what they actually require is not actually fifteen hundred members, but in order to make an application, you need sixteen hundred and fifty members so that they vet those members, and that's what they're doing at this moment, checking that those individuals are on the electoral roll and that their details are correct. And then there is a public notification process. So once they've checked, they then put a notice in the papers to notify people that I've applied so that people can have a look at the Constitution. They look at all, they look at the Constitution, they look at the party membership, and then they put it out for public notice. And if there are any objections, and those objections have to be based on the Electoral Act provisions, which we have looked at very closely. So but if they're, and that's to do with party name, party logo, so forth, there are rules, as you would have seen in the other changes to the Electoral Act, it wasn't just the number, the minimum number of members, it was also about not using names that are used in other political parties. And that was, of course, directed to the new Liberals who have had to change their name. But as far as I could see with my with my legal hat on, I think that the Kim for Canberra party satisfies the Electoral Act and then all being well, I should be registered in that first month of twenty twenty two and hopefully in advance of the election so it can nominate me to be above the line.
There was just one follow up question around that before we move on to talking about a couple of other issues of and if if an election is called earlier and you don't have that party structure in place, what do you think the impact will that be of that will be on on your numbers?
Well, first of all, there is a Plan B in terms of the way in which I can be identified below the line. And that is, of course, in terms of ungrouped, a grouped rather, a grouped approach. And then I guess the 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 bottom line is I do have those fifteen hundred members and I have been meeting, you know, nightly, doing two Zooms a night with Greater Canberraans, so that the numbers have been growing, of course, in terms of those people who are already on board, working with me. And I hope those numbers and that plan is that that will just grow and grow. That's the nature of the engaged movement of really getting out. And as Pro Act knows, that's what we're doing. We're engaging with the community. So that will continue. And so, yes, so it will definitely make it harder because we know that being above the line is where people generally vote, and that is part of the decision making of me of making that choice of going out there early in order to be in the best possible strategic position as an independent to get those one in six and hopefully more votes above the line. I mean, it's not impossible to get more than one in six votes if the community engagement is there. And I truly believe that that the speed within which people joined and and have been responding in terms of coming to the Zoom meetings that I've been running just shows the appetite and the energy. I mean, I've just been finding them extremely inspiring and energising about the numbers of people. I just think we're at a moment that is unprecedented with COVID and with the independents who had already started the movement, the the independent voices. We're just at this moment that of a of a wave that we've got to go with. And that was really part of why I chose to announce early and to really build on that wave, together with my own belief that this is the right time for someone like me to really be the advocate and listening as a conduit for Canberraans, because the the skill set that I want to bring into Parliament is one that we desperately need.
Thanks. And I think that links into a question that Gabriella had. Gabriella, would you like to ask that in person? Not sure if Gabriella is still there, or if not, let me read it out if I can find it again by flicking back up. It's a good, where are we? And anyway, I can't quite see it, but to summarise, it was around remaining, how do, what systems would you place? What mechanisms would you put in place to remain accountable to the electorate and the community? So yes, you know, staying true to that that spirit of the Voices For model, what would you do throughout your term?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Well, I mean, I'm planning to run some town hall meetings, style meetings. You know, the Zoom meetings, which have been actually, you know, fantastic in terms of being able to fit so many people into the one evening over over two different sessions without being too exhausting in moving around Canberra, not that Canberra is that big, of course, but but I am planning to be holding Greater Town Hall meetings and engaging the wonderful people here in this room and the wonderful people I've been meeting and growing that further and further. And I do think that that engagement has to be an ongoing engagement to be true exactly to what it is that an independent is doing in representing and listening to the needs of the community. So regular frameworks for meeting with Canberraans. I'm, you know, one of the wonderful people in my campaign team, and of course, my colleagues at the University of Canberra and the Deliberative Democracy Centre are inspiring in terms of, you know, that deliberative process being extremely meaningful. So thinking through and facilitating ways in which we can gather Canberraans around to share ideas about pressing issues as they as they go on during the term. I think that that is just fundamental. And I guess we're blessed here, you know, in terms of that Senate representation here in the ACT of the geographic spread not being so large that we can meet, you know, in various places around Canberra and draw people. But in addition to that sort of traditional sense of meeting and engaging, I do think that we we should benefit from Zoom and from and the sort of silver linings of COVID and thinking of different ways in which people who can't get out at night or who have other commitments, whether it be in terms of family or other pressures on their lives, who can't come to those sorts of meetings, how do we continue to make sure that we engage with them and provide avenues for their their contributions as citizens who might not have those privileges of of public access? So I'd be really open to ideas from all of you in terms of, you know, we can use the social media mechanisms and frameworks, but can we do things that might not be so so pressing on people's lives in an emotional sense? Because we know there's a lot out there in terms of the psychological impact of of the social engagement world that can be a little bit undermining of of people's wellbeing. So I think I'd like to be really creative and to think through with all of you ways in which we ensure that we have the greatest diversity of Canberraans being able to share their ideas with me and that being an ongoing process as a as a true representative.
Thank you. Thank you, Claire. Sorry, you caught me over at the stove there.
No problem at all. Please do jump in if you've got some.
Is there anything else, any other ideas you have yourself?
No, but I'm just aware that when you say, you know, the traditional things, well, I'm not so conscious of the traditional things, really. Like, we've had representatives that have really.
Not done that, yeah.
Yes, no, no, they're hardly hardly in contact at all. It's driving different to a lot of, a lot of inputs. So, yes, I don't, yes. So, yes.
Well, when I say traditional, I mean in the authentic democratic sense of traditional. And you're right, we've seen an app, we haven't seen that here. And that's disappointing. So of course, those are essentials, I think, for true representation and engagement with the community. But I'm also thinking about, we have to be careful about, this is something that I said earlier, I'm not sure if you heard, that the traditional structures were created in environments where there was a very strong public and private divide and that there were certain expectations in relation to who was mainly in the home. And I think we just have to be thoughtful when we do go back to the notion of community engagement of thinking about people's different lived experiences as a way of making sure we do truly hear from everybody and not just from the people who are used to being consulted.
Yes, thank you. Thanks. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow up on that though? In terms of consulting with that range, there's always going to be, you know, competing views, different views.
Yes.
How, what's your thinking on how do you manage that?
Yes, look, I I think that's a really important question, Claire, and one that I'm thinking, I've been thinking about a lot. I'm not sure if any of you have been aware of, there's some some wonderful work that's been done about the politicisation of our political environment and and very much about partisanship as being undermining of of true democratic decision making. There's a writer in the US called Dawn Mencken who talks about facilitating a greater democratic environment. And I think the point that you just made, Claire, is spot on. I can't actually, I can represent all of Canberra, but I won't necessarily have all of Canberraans' views there because, of course, not everybody agrees on issues. So the question is, and it comes back to that point I made earlier in relation to the carbon and fossil fuel, I think it is about really affirming to people that I will listen and truly engage with their position and not just treat them as if if their initial position that they're putting to me isn't something that I would normally have thought about or agreed with, to truly engage with what is motivating that that position and to try and understand in a way that I can respond if I'm going, if I I feel that the other positions that have come to me are more persuasive to me and more aligned with the values that I'm bringing into play. And to truly I'm, the word is engage, but what I mean by is listen to, try and share that understanding of what I'm hearing from them in terms of what's motivating them for a different position. And then if I still am not coming to their position, to share with them, you know, again, in an honest way, why I might not be aligning with their view on this point, but that they know I will truly listen to them on the next point and not categorise them in any particular way because of their view on one thing, I will still come back to them and say, I want your views on the next issue, that I'm going to be truly engaging with everyone. It doesn't mean I'm going to be able to agree with everybody, but that sort of engagement is one where people will trust you in your judgment and your wisdom in the decision making process and that they will accept that I might not necessarily always be able to represent their view, but they will truly appreciate that I will always listen to them and engage with them in coming to my view.
Thank you. I might, we've got about another fifteen minutes or so, and I've got various questions that had come through on email as well, that I I do want to get to a few of those as well. So maybe I'll toss one of those in on a quite a different topic. So the question is, as a senator, your views on international relations could matter.
Yes.
On on Israel, is a two state solution something you would support?
Oh, absolutely. Look, look, first of all, on international relations, I think with all aspects of international relations, I think it's really important that we be guided by the evidence and the material out there from those various different countries. So what, I mean, Israel is a very obviously relevant question to me being Jewish and having spent time in Israel, that it's an, it's one area of international relations where I have seen what is happening on the ground and have had the privilege of being able to engage with various different community groups. I've been involved, involved as in when I I taught my citizenship law course twice at Tel Aviv Law School and once at Hebrew University Law School. I've done, been running a pro bono case for a young family who were here where the mother is a non-Jewish Israeli and had a child here, and I've been assisting them in their advocacy around her citizenship in Israel, for instance. So I've had some involvement there to know that there's such valuable and really, you know, cutting edge work being done by all communities within Israel to achieve peace there. There's a women wage peace movement that I went along to a major conference. So, you know, there's some really great work and and it's an example to me, as and I'm sure there are in all international actions, that it's you get better information from the ground than you do from often the reporting that's often there. So, yes, I'm support, I'm very committed to supporting peace in a way that recognises the rights and supports the Palestinian people in their self determination at the same time as safeguarding the security of the Jewish state. So, you know, I I feel like I can bring a lot into into Parliament in the sense of a positive move forward to assisting with Australian policy, foreign policy in that area. But in all areas, I think it's, as you said, as a senator, I will be able to use that experience in other areas of foreign policy with our own region, you know, close to hand of being sure that you engage with what is going on on the ground, not just what's being reported.
Thank you. And maybe one last of the ones on email of how do you think the growing housing crisis can be resolved?
Oh, that's a really good question. Gary and I were just talking about this today in terms of seeing the reports of house prices, house prices rocketing and how do the next generation manage to even think about, you know, putting themselves in that position? Look, I think that that is, again, an area where you could really get commitment across. I think that that is, again, an area where you could really get commitment across party lines. I mean, this is an issue for the future for um, all um, all of us thinking about the next generation, um, and social housing being such a key issue in relation to that, of how we make sure we provide for that. Now, a lot of that, of course, is um, more state or territorial based um, on one level, but of course, the federal government has a role to play in terms of the overall tax system and frameworks. And so I'd be very interested in other people's um, support there in terms of developing policies to do that. But again, on all of these issues, which are just such um, important issues for the wellbeing, you know, the very physical wellbeing of people in terms of, we know, you know, older women, um, and the the vulnerability of older women who haven't had a a good superannuation and their access to housing is just so key. And it's about unpacking, um, going back to Tony's point about diversity. You know, unpacking, how do the different policies play out to different parts of the community? I mean, if you look at our budget, how does, how, when you unpack a budget and and when you form a budget, when a government is forming a budget, to what extent are they really unpacking the policies to see the the ways in which they play out for different aspects of our community? And ha- and and housing, of course, is a key area where so much more could be done if there was that um, attention to that sort of detail.
I just check if any other um, questions. I know there's been a few things that have come through the chat that I think we've um, sort of responded to in various ways, but I did want to give people a chance to to put their hand up. Um, if there was any other particular questions they would like to ask. If not, I might just last, one last one from email, and then we might um, uh, wrap things up. Um, and that is, how can we use the privilege of our position to best serve others less well off?
Look, I think that that's a really um, powerful question. And in fact, in one of um, my Zoom meetings um, the other night, there was a sort of a um, someone reflecting on talking about the nature of Canberra, Canberraans and how we're better educated. And someone said, it's the privilege of education. I said, that's exactly it, that we, that um, all of us, I think. I mean, it really, from um, my schooling days, many of you may know, I've just recently launched my book on um, uh, the biography of my high school principal, Jo Montgomery. Um, and those school days as a young sort of Jewish girl in a non-Jewish school environment at Presbyterian Ladies College really reinforced for me personally, and I think this is going to the question for all of us of of recognizing the privileges that we have and and, you know, the privilege for me of being born into a loving family in an environment where I was given a great education and having the the a lottery of the various skills that I was born with in terms of um, being able to unpack ideas and share ideas and in and um, engage with other people. Those things, uh, I've always felt and been imbued with a sense that those things are privileges that we must be thinking about of how we use those for the greater community. It's that sort of balancing act of being conscious of what we each have as um, human beings and how we need to be secure in that and be proud of what we've we've got, but recognize the lottery of so much of what we do have in our privilege and the importance of using that. So you're, the the question that's come, um, I'm not sure from whom uh, for who is one for all of us always, but I guess in the nature of of this meeting, of you listening to me, it is one that really is um, propelling me and has propelled me at this point in my life to take this step. Um, to say, these are privileges that I have that I really feel could be used as a conduit for the community to really change the way we do things, to bring those um, aspects to my life experience, to listen to others' life experiences and to channel those and to evaluate those when we come to making policy, to make things, to make our our own experiences better, but to make um, the experiences for all our 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 country and and obviously in a broader sense, uh, humanity in terms of climate change better for everyone. And I think that's just something that is um, that if if we were all driven and in that way, that would make the world a better place. But I think we all do have the capacity to be driven if the right um, frameworks are there. And part of our responsibility in taking up public roles is to really try to make sure that those privileges and um, um, opportunities are there for everybody and that um, if we can all work to that end, then we're going to be living in a better place.
Hmm. It's just been a a follow up question come around the sort of issues around privilege and 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 education and
Yes.
A question about um, your position around funding to private and religious schools.
Oh, yes.
Um, and um, you know, whether to stop funding to that in the aim to fund and educate all children equally to the same standard and opportunity as a way to create a more cohesive, tolerant and and equal society.
Look, I think there's no question that we want to ensure exactly that all children have access to those um, to those fundamentals and building blocks. Um, even, and I should say here, even from an earlier age than they are now, um, you know, when I was talking earlier to Tony about um, changing structures within society to enable a more equal framework. I think that in that um, in that context, we should be talking about early childhood education from the age of three. Um, the universal, you know, early childhood education. Um, that would be enhancing of all children in terms of the opportunities for them, you know, during COVID, um, when the government did recognize, and it seemed such a liberating point, that childcare was a fundamental and essential for us to be able to manage during COVID. Um, that was the first time that many vulnerable families who should otherwise be entitled to childcare actually took it up because they didn't have to pass the safety net provisions and the proof, the proof of their desire, their um, you know, seeking job support, for instance. Um, and that that all these children who should have had the the a- access to childcare, early child um, childcare hadn't been and would be and and was started. And it's a way of saying that if we enable those structures right from the age of three, then we are going to be um, providing for a more socially cohesive society, but a also a healthier society in terms of um, providing those sort of um, building blocks for for children from that age. But I think all the way through, now there are, I understand that there are places for um, um, dedicated education for uh, different community groups in relation to um, offerings beyond that fundamental universal child uh, childcare and education. Um, but that shouldn't be uh, an extra privilege that um, government necessarily um, uh, adds even further to. Um, in any, it's in the sense of recognizing individual differences and um, it, that's important, but it's the economic frameworks that should be addressing, making sure that all the strains have access to those fundamental um, privileges that shouldn't be privileges, but should be fundamental to a secure and healthy society.
Sure. Can I just a follow up and check on that? Because I think the question was around funding to private schools, religious schools.
Yes.
Do you have a position around that?
Um, not a specific provision, a position, except to say, though, that um, in terms of um, the private schools that are seeking to do something other than um, basic education. So in the, in religious schools that are wanting to provide a specific religious um, education in addition to the um, you know, um, fundamental or mainstream education. I d- I don't see there being any harm in that, but that's a separate question to the funding of that of that. And um, I think that that would be something that would, I would be interested in in hearing more people's views about in relation to policy and policy positions.
Yeah, great, because there's a, yeah, a couple of questions, comments coming there around.
I'd be interested, I'm really interested in people's views on that to help.
Around the the kind of, yes, subsidies to 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 the private education. But I don't think we've got time for to get into that now, because there's, and I'm sure there's a whole range of other things that people would be keen to to talk to you about. But I think we are coming to the end of the discussion, so I did want to um, say a real thank you to to everyone for coming. As I said, there'll be a a a um, recording of of the discussion um, available shortly. And I would welcome everyone's, you know, thoughts on reflections um, on on tonight and send send through any any thoughts that you have. Um, but also, of course, a very warm um, thank you to Kim for joining us um, tonight. It's been wonderful to hear more from you, and I hope you've also gained from
Absolutely.
Hearing from all of us. So thank you very much for joining us.
Thanks, Claire. And can I just make one um, one further point before everyone leaves? It's been wonderful hearing from you. If you want to hear more from me, as I said, I'm running Zoom meetings um, uh, in the evenings. Go to um, just contact the info at Kim for Canberra, and I'd love to host another meeting with, um, we have up to twenty people in the room to really share um, ideas. So I I'm I'm wanting to do more and more, I mean, I'm I'm continuing to do that, I wanted to continue continue to do that. But one other plug, Claire, if I can, next Tuesday night, we're just about to start advertising. Susan Benadica, who was part of the um, Voices for Indi campaign for Cathy McGowan and Helen. She's running herself next, um, for the next election as an independent for Victoria. And she's running a series on a Tuesday night um, on on her, for her campaign, and she's invited me next Tuesday night to be part of a discussion with Jane Caro. And Jane is going to be talking to both of us, from to me and Susan next Tuesday night. And I know it doesn't clash with your event next Wednesday night, because I wouldn't have now that would have been a bit trickier, but it doesn't clash. If you're up to two Zooms next week, go to Zali on Wednesday night with um, Pro Act and come to to um, Susan Benadica and me next Tuesday. We'll, we'll start issuing information um, about that next, um, that event next Tuesday night, which is a webinar, and you'll be able to hear more from me in that context if you'd like, and I hope you can. And Claire and Glenn and all of you involved in Pro Act, thanks for the opportunity. I think we're all like-minded human beings, and one of the values of being an independent is that we're not fixed into a party structure. We can, as independents, think about what we think independently is the right way of going forward to get an independent into the Senate to represent Canberra. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Kim, and thanks, everyone. Um, and yes, hope to see you at one of those events um, next week. So thanks very much. Bye.
Bye bye, everyone.